All right, we are recording and I'm going to go live. Okay, you're good anytime.
Okay, let's, let's call the meeting to order for the November 17th Delaware County District Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Ms. Cox, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Baker? Mr. Butler?
Here.
Ms. Eldridge?
Here.
Mr. McCoy? Ms. Queen?
Here.
Ms. T, Mr. TD, sorry.
Here.
Thank you.
Can I have a, a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October the 20th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who's second?
Holly.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a lot of, just a few things under the President's report that I'd like to go over. Under the Director's report, we will be discussing the new pandemic issues and what that means to the Delaware Library going forward. For the, for new board members as well as old, we have a Human Resources Committee which consists of Holly Quinn, Brenda Eldridge, and Sina Baker. And we're going to be evaluating George and Angela at our December Board Meeting. The Human Resource Committee will be sending out information to you hopefully prior to December so that you can review. If you have questions regarding the information that you receive, please send that documentation to every member that's on the Human Resource Committee so that they will have, so they will be better prepared in December to discuss the issues or questions that you may have. After that, once the, once we meet in December, we will be going into a breakout session to discuss the remuneration for both George and Angela. By law, we have to come out of the breakout session and identify what the salary increase, if there's going to be any, for those two individuals in the, in a public forum. So I just want to make sure that you are well of that. Let's see here. Okay. Okay, um, there's also going to be a discussion under, under Georgia's report regarding Zoom meetings for 2021, and this is really a complicated issue. But, but, but hopefully we can give you some sense of where we think we will be. Because if there's no Zoom meetings, we can't have a meeting, and we might have to have a special meeting in December, early December to discuss this outside of our regular board meeting. So I just wanted to make you folks aware of that as well. And then regarding the agenda, there was a couple of items that were left off, which you should have received. One is the Fiscal Office Report about a motion for donations, and I'll go over those. If you haven't received those, I'll just mention those when we get down to that part of the agenda. And that is it for right now. And this is going to be a, a pretty important aspect of our process. And then one, one other thing I forgot is that the, the groundbreaking ceremony is tomorrow, but it's changed because we're not allowed to have more than 10 people. But we're going to have, we're going to have the groundbreaking via Zoom. And the groundbreaking is at 2 o'clock PM, and there'll be a police officer out there to show you where to park. If you get there, please dress comfortably, and please wear comfortable shoes because we're going to be treading through the, the grass, et cetera. So that's, that's it for my report.
Who is allowed to go and who is not allowed to go?
Well, that's a good question. I know that the invitation has been sent out to Holly as the Vice President of the Board, the Mayor, George, Molly. And George, who have I missed?
I've got the list here. Hold on just a second. We pull it up here. Brenda, what we did was, we, we had to limit it to 10 people. So what we did was, Michael is the, as the President, and Holly is the Vice President, and Holly was also, of course, on the, the Building Committee all along. Then from Library staff, it'll be Angela and me. It will be Karen from the Friends, the Mayor of Powell, Frank Frattoni, Jeffrey Sackenheim, our Architect, Theron France from Marker, Todd Reiser, who is the person we've been working with, is ill and couldn't make it. Andy White, who is the City Manager of Powell, and then Nicole to be the photographer and videographer while we're there. So that was the 10 that we limited to. We've sent out email to everybody who had been invited and who had RSVP'd that they were coming, telling them about the, the Governor's new orders, which kind of limited what we could do. So you, you should have gotten that probably.
Yes, I did. And that's why I asked, because I had assumed that I would be calling in instead of being there.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to make sure that that was correct.
Yeah, we'll be doing this on the Library's Facebook page is where you'll be able to find it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, Michael. I am unclear about the review process. I understand there's a committee. But once you, I guess, draft a review, then does the rest of the trustees get to see it?
Yes.
And deliberate on it? Okay.
Yes. That's what we'll be doing when we go into the breakout sessions at the December Board Meeting. And that will be led by the Human Resource Committee.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Very much. This is the new meeting.
How you doing? Good to see you.
All righty. Angela, Fiscal Officers' Report.
You have my key financial points, but I just want to highlight a few things, just so. It looks pretty boring, but here's, here's the Cliff Notes of the Cliff Notes of the financial reports. So if you look at your year-to-date report, it looks like the tax collection is down significantly, and that's just because we didn't get the Delaware County Property Tax Distribution until November 10th. So that's $2,318,000. So that's not reported in, in the October. It's going to be reported in November. So that, that's why that looks like it's going a little bit low. There, we also received a $5,000 grant from the Friends. And that is part of the, on the monthly report, monthly financial report, the Special Revenue Fund. And the grant, the grant from their friends is the supplemental because departments had asked for stuff that were outside of the budget, and their friends kicked in their money, and that's why the supplemental is for $5,000. That's the Friends Grant being appropriated. The PLF is, you know, statistically even as it were, where it was from October of 2019. I got the distribution for November, and it's a 2% increase of 2019. So I don't know, I'm, I don't know that they know where it's going to be. It looks like we're going to end up with more money than they said that we were going to get in the PLF for 2020. So that's the good news for 2020. But I'm not sure. So, but it looks like we're going to get more in PLF. So. And I think unless there's any questions, that's all I have for you right now.
So we need a motion to approve the October Financial Reports, Invoices, and Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussions or any additional questions for Angela? Hearing that, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, anybody abstaining or, or any nays? Okay, motion carries. The next one is to approve the supplemental appropriations for October. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I could just say, this is, the Friends made the supplemental, basically was $1,000 for each branch in the bookmobile to do, just to, to pick up some extra things for this year. And it was that the Friends, I, I had one branch that asked for something, then they said, well, we should do something for each of them. And so within a month, I turned it around, and that's what happened. So I just wanted to say, and you're, I know you're going to approve it with gratitude in a moment, but I just wanted to say what that was. So some of it went towards the groundbreaking, some of it went for a, a new floor mat for alphabet storytime mat for the Powell Library, a button maker for the bookmobile. So it's a, a nice variety of things. So just wanted to say thank you.
Thanks, George, for that update. Having said that, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, the, there's a new part that was not attached to the original agenda, and I'll read it to you. We need to approve with gratitude the donations, donations from the following individuals and organizations. From the Friends of the Library, the supplemental grant that George just mentioned, and from John T. Rogers and Piper B. Rogers, an unrestricted donation. So I need a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Go here, second?
Second. I feel like the second of Last Resort.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mr. Needham?
Okay, I have several things that were not in my report. The thing that Michael was talking about, about our going forward with the Zoom meetings. HB 197 was the bill that was passed by the General Assembly and signed by the Governor in March that basically gave public bodies the right to meet electronically, whereas in state law currently, they don't have that right. And the bill expires after December 1st of this year. So what I would suggest is, and I will have some warning I will send out first thing tomorrow morning, is if you want to see us continue to be able to meet electronically for the months coming ahead, you might want to contact Senator Brenner or Representative Jordan and see if we can move that along. I've already written to them personally to, to, to suggest that this is something that really needs to be done. And since they're in the lame duck session now, this is the time to do it. What Mike was talking about, about having a special meeting is the bill, the current law expires after December 1st. So what Michael and I talked about, and what we thought you might want to consider doing, is to schedule tentatively a meeting for December 1st, which would be two weeks from today. We have a couple of things that need to be done in December in order to have a smooth transition into 2020. Angela has the appropriations resolution that needs to be passed. We also have the new pay scale for the rest of the staff that needs to be approved by the, the Board. You'll see the things on the, the important dates list that comes out with the Board pack. If we do the meeting on December 1st, we can still do it by Zoom, even if the HB 150, 197 is not renewed. And then we can worry about what to do in January, probably all through December. So I would recommend that we got, there are a number of groups in the state that are lobbying the General Assembly to extend this law. School Boards Associations, some of the other Commissioners and, and City Councils and people like that. So I think it's, if they put together some sort of an omnibus bill, this would be something that would be in it, because this was part of a 359-page bill last time. But I think it's still a good idea to remind them of that. And the, the points to be made are the fact that it does keep everybody safe, but it also allows a lot more people to see and submit questions and everything for public meetings than we would ordinarily have. So. That, that's, yeah.
I may, I may be stating the obvious, but as things currently stand, after December, if we can't meet electronically, we would be barred by meeting in person because of the rule of not having over 10 people
No.
meeting together.
Well, you, the Board could meet. Only the Board needs to be in the room. I mean.
But it has to be, it has to be open to the public. How would you be open to the public if you wouldn't allow anybody in?
You could open it to the first three people who came. And then do it electronically for the rest. I mean, I think that's the only way.
Okay. Don't need to dwell on it. Just ask.
But I, I mean, it's, it's, it's a mess, no matter how you look at it. So, but, but even that is my guess, and you know, I don't even play a lawyer on TV. So I'd be, I'd be on the phone with Eric immediately about a question like that. So, because that's a good one. And I, I don't really know what the answer is. So. But.
George?
Yes.
Would you be able, and Michael, this might be a question for you too. Would you guys be able to effectively get together all the materials that you need, including the review, Michael, for, by December 1st?
I do have Angela about the appropriations resolution, and you can jump in here anytime, but Angela says she can have that ready. Angela and I have done our self-assessments, and the Personnel Committee have those already. So I, I mean, I know Thanksgiving's right smack in the middle there, and it does make some, make for some time crunch. But that was, that is a consideration. Michael, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay. No, but that, that is a very good question. And I, I, I know that the Human Resource Committee has already met and discussed some of the issues pertaining to the, the information that they've received from George and Angela regarding their pre-review process. I don't want to put them on the spot, but I guess I might. Those Human Resource people that are on the phone now, do you think that you could get the information together and to the Board prior to December the 1st?
Michael, you and I need to touch base, because my understanding was the only thing you were looking for this year were the selfie vows.
Well, well, you get the selfie vows, but you also got the.
Well, I, I know. I chaired this committee for a few years, and last year, we did just selfie vows. And that was my understanding from this year, because you and I sat down, if you remember, in February or January. And I came up with this new format that basically was a schedule, so we knew who needed to do when. And, and we have a, we'd start back in, effectively in June or July, getting input from the Board. And then the pandemic happened, and my understanding from you was that you were looking for selfie vows only this year. Again, selfie vows and salary recommendations.
Yes, well, right, selfie vow, you're right, selfie vows and salary recommendations. And, and the selfie vows, if, if all of you, if all three of you agree with the salary recommendations for George and Angela, you can pass that information out with the selfie vows, which will allow us to be able to have a very effective meeting on December the 1st. That's a slight change.
Yeah, it is. Okay, cool. That works then.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have a whole lot of time, and that's a very good question, Scott. So if, if I'm hearing correctly from, from members of the committee is that they, they will pass on the self-evaluations as well as the recommended salary increases prior to December the 1st, so that you will have an opportunity to look at them and potentially ask any questions to the three of them.
Michael, I think you already have all that from me.
Why do, but you want me to send it out?
Well, yeah, because there's, I, I passed it on to you. I turned my homework in to you, if you will.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay. All right, we're here. Okay, let me take one step back, back. Scott, I will check with the other two, and I will have the information, as long as there's not any disagreements on the percentages, et cetera. I will have it out to the full Board no later than the end of this week. Is, will that meet with your, will that be okay, Scott?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine with me. I guess the only other question I would have is if, what would be the danger, I mean, what would be the danger in meeting on the regular day using Zoom, even if the House doesn't pass a bill? Are we, are we in violation of? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a legal person, but I think we might be in violation, which means that the meeting would have no standing.
Gotcha. Okay.
The, the law currently doesn't allow boards to meet electronically. So you have to have at least a quorum in person in one place to take any official action. So that, that's why, that's what the downside is. So you, you, you know, you can have an, an informal meeting, but even now, you, you're not allowed to take any action then.
It's unlikely that it's going to be an issue. But, Lord, stranger things have happened. And they sure have, but I can't imagine that that's going to be an issue. So.
But still, I'm thinking if they pass anything at all that has anything, this will be one of the things that they will update.
Yeah.
Okay, so, 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 let's see, so the day is Tuesday. I will have this stuff emailed out before Friday.
And.
With the, with the recommendations of the Human Resource Committee.
So do, I, I guess I, I want to make sure that we were on the same page on this. Are we going to officially change the December meeting then to December 1st? And then not do the meeting on December 15th? Or are we going to just, we'll, we'll schedule that December 1st just in case? But then we have to know when the, the, we make the decision, because we do have to announce that meeting.
Right.
We have to get the word out to the, if we're changing it. So.
Well, I would say that to be on the safe side, and as Holly sort of mentioned, that these are crazy times, I would officially schedule the meeting for December the 1st. And you can, you can always cancel it and go back to the one on the, on the regular date, if in fact the, the House or whomever approves the extension of the Zoom 2021. I mean, I think it's better to be safe to have the meeting scheduled than not.
Yeah, I might be wrong, but I don't, if, if we officially as a board schedule the meeting for December 1st, and we put the word out, we have to have it on December 1st. And, and so if a motion is needed for that, I'll make it.
And I'll second that. So we change that to December 1st. Either, either way, we're having our meeting December 1st. I think it's the only, Scott, to your point, we can't say, you know, if they vote on it at 2 o'clock, no, you don't have to meet at 5. We'll see in two weeks. So, yeah.
Okay, fine. Then we have, we have a, a motion and a second to have our December meeting officially on December the 1st, 2020. So we've got a, 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 a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any against? Okay, motion carries. We will have our official December meeting on December the 1st at our regular time. And we, and the Human Resources Committee will, you will have their recommendations, et cetera. And I'll have those out to you by the end of this week. I'll double check with them just to make sure that I'm correct on my assumptions, and we'll move forward on December the 1st with the value, with the increases and evaluations.
I will say that we'll have abbreviated Financial and Directors' Reports, since there's only going to be two weeks of stuff to work on. And, and Angela will be able to have the, the reports that close on November 30th for December 1st.
Angela? I know. Imagine that.
But I mean, she's not superhuman, although there are times when she is. So.
Only if you promise to have extended reports in January.
Of course.
Okay, a couple other things. I did want to let you know, we are monitoring very closely what's going on with the, everything with the COVID. I just want to show you an illustration. This is actually a photograph of Molly's board. You can see it behind her in her picture, where we're trying to keep track of what's going on, not only with the recommendations from the Governor's Office, but what's going on with the, the three school districts we serve, the other libraries, and the Central Library Consortium, the concerns that we're hearing from the staff, what we're hearing from the public. And so it's a fluid situation. We are monitoring it constantly. We are on the, especially on the Thursday call, when they talk about what the number of cases are, and whether counties have gone red or, or orange or yellow or whatever. So I just want to let you know that we are working on this. I am, you know, constantly getting input from staff and from other directors. I just, I know that one of the other libraries that borders us is thinking of going to Curbside. They're having a board meeting tonight as well, when they're going to decide, decide that. So it's, it's, it's a fluid situation. So.
So who next year is planning on going to Curbside, George?
Westerville.
Okay.
So I, you know, since we're meeting again in two weeks, that's actually kind of good, because we'll be able to see if any of the stuff that's happened that Governor DeWine's been trying to do has had any impact at all. So then December 1st, we can, I'll have another report on this then. So.
George, I hate to keep interrupting you, but, but even though we're having the board meeting on 12/1, if this Zoom issue's not resolved, we need to think about how we're going to address an in-person meeting, if that's going to be required in January of 2021. We need to start thinking about that as well.
If we, if we, if we're limited to 10 people, we could, we can mask a distance in the community room. There's enough room there to distance in the community room.
There is, yeah. And the other thing we could do is every, if everybody had a laptop, we could do a Zoom meeting for the other board members who are out of the room, so they could at least participate to, by talking and giving their input, even though they can't officially vote. They can participate by phone, but they can't be counted in the forum, and they can't vote. Those are the two things that they can't do if they're, if they're electronically present. So that's, that, that, and that way also, you know, Sam and Angela and I and Molly, we can participate by Zoom while trustees were in the room together. So.
Yeah, makes sense.
If we had to do it that way, that's a, I, I can't imagine.
Yeah.
The General Assembly's not going to extend that, but it might happen retroactively instead of, because remember, that actually came out as a Governor's executive order first, and then was ratified by the General Assembly. So I don't know if it might happen that way again. Actually, I think it was Dave Yost first, then the Governor, and then the General Assembly. So anyway, that, that's, we'll, we'll be following that very closely. Okay, the two other things, we do, I just today officially offered the position of HR Manager to our new person. It's a name that may be familiar to some of you. Amanda Sheestrom was the.
Oh, my gosh, seriously?
Seriously.
What a great call.
Thank you. I was delighted when she applied, and I've just, she interviewed really well. We had a very thorough interview process. We got, we had about 40-plus people who did the initial application. We narrowed that down to about 12 that we followed up and discussed their resumes. We got it down to four people. We interviewed in person. And then Angela and Sam and Molly and I did one set of interviews. The staff, we had a staff committee of eight that interviewed with the person to kind of talk about what the library is like and what it's like to work here. And then Nicole acted as the host for each of them, and also did a little kind of informal interview with each of them as well. So this was a, a good choice. So Amanda, for those of you who don't know her, for six years was the HR Communications Person for Orange Township. Before that, she worked for the Courts. She worked for Judge, I want to say Spicer, but I don't think that's right. She was in the, the family in probate court before she went to Orange Township. So she's got good knowledge of how county government works. She's got good knowledge of public employment and great contacts around the county. So.
She's got a great work ethic. She's, actually, I thought she found something. I was going to email her this week to see if she landed somewhere.
Well, she did.
Yes. That's a great call.
So, yeah, we're really, we're really.
We are very lucky. Good job.
Thank you. So we should be starting Monday. And yes, Angela, I do have the form filled out and ready to go. So. So, okay. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about just briefly, we have a new program for, through the end of the year that we're doing here, where we're asking the public to drop off cards for people we serve with our homebound service so that we can have little personal cards. They don't have to be holiday-specific, thinking-of-you-type-things. And we have, a lady actually sent a message to Hannah, Hannah Simpson in Communications, who's been doing this for years, but doing it, sending out cards all over the country. And now she's delighted. She's got 93 that she's going to drop off with us because she's so happy that she can do it locally instead of doing it to people nationally. So it's a, it's a nice project, and it's just a way of reaching out to our folks who are homebound clients of the Outreach Department. So it's kind of, just kind of a fun project. So. And if you have any you'd like to drop off, we'd be more than happy to make sure they get them. We're asking people to drop them off without envelopes or in unsealed envelopes. We just want to make sure nobody punks us. Okay? So, all right. And other than that, if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer or try to answer, or delegate to somebody who knows.
Are there any questions for George? Well, hearing none, George, you're off the hook right now.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cowan, Friends of the Library Report?
Yes, sir. Um, a couple other things in addition to what I submitted. George, we're having a meeting tomorrow with some of your staff, because we are kind of piggybacking on, on that, and we're going to be doing some of the things, or we haven't quite figured out how we're doing it, but we kind of came together with that idea about the same time you guys did. So we're going to talk to you guys about how it's working and all that kind of stuff. So that's pretty cool.
Talk to you guys about how it's working and all that kind of stuff. So that's pretty cool. We partnered with the Historical Society and Fort Meyer Nursery or Fort Meyer and Sun Nursery. And. So the Historical Society, the Friends of the Library both made $600 in our plant sale for Christmas, which I thought was pretty cool. Considering it was all done via email and we didn't have to stand on the street corner and sell stuff. We are also, we also donated to people in need, 10 boxes of children's CDs and DVDs. For the people in need to come in and get them for Christmas presents for the kids. So. One of our volunteers works with them also and said, hey, we need this. And we said, sure, you can have it. So that's gone. And, um. This board meeting Wednesday night is going to be Penny Mongs' last official board meeting as a board member for the Friends, at least for now. She can come back in and on, in a year, but she was one of the original board members and so. She's going to stay very active because she wants to co-chair, she's co-chairing the committee for the library, for the, some of the festivities we're planning for library opening. But. I just wanted you all to know that this will be Penny's last official board meeting in November. So if any of you want to send her a congratulations or wish her well. She just had surgery. She had her whole shoulder replaced. And so she's not having a very good time right now, but. Um, and I think that that's all that I've got to tell you.
Well, thank you so much, Karen, for that. And I, I was wondering why I hadn't seen Penny at the Meals on Will. I've seen Jim, but I didn't see her. So I'll have to send her something and wish her well.
She had her whole, like, shoulder rebuilt. They did a, like, she's got an artificial shoulder and I, I don't even want to talk about it.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. Thank you so much for your report. Under Committee Reports, the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee consists of myself. And Brad and Sina. And we met and had a thorough discussion of the report. And we talked to Angela about it and we, all the right questions were asked and I, I'm certain that we don't have any more questions. So let me make sure that I'm, I'm. Get information to Brad. Brad, do you have any other questions regarding report prior to asking for the board's approval? Okay, so having, having said that, I need someone to make a motion to approve the Finance Committee's budget request for 2021.
So moved.
I will second.
I'm exhausted.
All right. Now, are there any other discussions regarding the budget? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. I want to add the appropriations resolution that I'm going to have ready for your December 1st board meeting. Is this budget, it's the same thing, just stated a different way. It's a formality that we have to have the appropriation resolution before we can spend any money in 2021. So. That will be one thing to expect. It's something you've already seen. It's just going to look a little bit different because they want it in different categories. So.
I would just add to this, one of the things is that Angela does this very efficiently because other libraries, some of them. Do what they call a temporary appropriations resolution, which means there's an extra step in there. But by doing this in December instead of waiting until. The organizational meeting in January, she saves a resolution and we're able to start paying bills right after the first of the year. So this is actually a much more efficient process than a lot of other libraries use. Perfectly legal, but just more efficient.
Thank you, Mr. Needham. Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
Is there any unfinished business? New business? Nicole, is there any public participation?
It is quiet today.
All right. Okay, so just a quick reminder, we're going to have groundbreaking tomorrow at 2:00 PM. You can watch it via Zoom.
No, you can't watch it on Zoom. You got to watch it on our Facebook page.
Okay, on the Facebook page, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The, the 10 invitee, invitees know who they are, wear comfortable shoes and bundle up if it's a little chilly. It's going to be a, a special occasion. I'm really looking forward to it with the rest of the board members. And having said that. Before we adjourn, are there any other things that any, or anything that any of the board members would like to discuss or bring up?
I just wanted to bring up the nominating committee. I assume we will attempt to do that on December 1st.
Yes.
And I had, nobody has contacted me with any new nominations. So as it currently stands, we have Michael as president. Nominated as president, Holly self-nominating as vice president, and Sina self-nominating as. Secretary.
Secretary.
So if you do want to nominate yourself or someone else, please reach out to me before December 1st.
So thank you, Brenda. Thank you. Well, it seems like this has been a very quick and efficient meeting. It's not record time, but we've got a lot of, a lot accomplished. Thank you for your patience and understanding. And hopefully we'll have a very fruitful meeting on December the 1st. And after having said that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Really? Oh, thank you. I am not going to second that motion. And I'm usually the one who does. Brad?
A second?
All right. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Stay masked, stay safe.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Stay healthy. Bye.
We'll see you on the 1st.
Okay.